Hello, Commissioner Rivlin.
Sheriff Strawski, how are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
You have your winter sweater on while I'm still in. Still in a heatwave. I'm kidding.
Yeah, it's a we had like a good last couple of weeks for really nice, nice warm evenings and then got a little colder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Colin.
Matt.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, Maggie. Mike.
Hello.
Doug, it's gonna be a short meeting today. This evening, I should say.
One item.
I'm thinking an inning or two.
Had a big jam.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. Just need a few hits.
They may run out of pitchers.
Really? Good news is they've been here before, right? And worst cases, they get to come home. Play another game.
We still have Johnny Quado. They could put him to the rest of the game.
He's off the roster.
He is?
Yeah, he's not on the roster. Yeah.
He's not on the roster for this series. We don't want Johnny Quado anywhere. No.
All right, do we have everybody here?
I don't see Adam yet.
Thank you, Corin.
Oh, yeah, he's there. It's on the list.
Attendance.
Thank you.
Evening. I'm gonna dial in with my phone. I'll be on shortly.
Corin, did you say we had Adam or not?
I think he's coming on board right now.
Okay, I got it.
He's on the list.
Unfortunately, it looks like one of Santa Clara's Fire Department's engines a few doors down one of my neighbors. See all the flashing lights. It's not too serious.
All right, it looks like we have everybody. Good evening. Fellow commissioners, members of the public, and our special guests from the Fire Department. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for October 12, 2021. This regular Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N 2920 issued by the Governor. Corin, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Political order of Commissioner Bookbinder.
Present.
Matt Carr.
Present.
Commissioner Craig.
Here.
Rivlin.
Here.
Commissioner Zisser.
Here.
Vice Chair Ching.
Yeah.
Cheryl Strawski.
Here.
Present.
Thank you, Corin. I'm assuming everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any corrections or modifications?
I have a few notes that I'd like to make. There's a couple of them, so if anybody else wants to go first.
Go ahead, Adam.
Okay, just wanted to check one more thing. I was just putting this together. Okay, yeah, it's in fix. All right, so on page 12, the quote from Planner Rose on the 0.4 FAR says, said that there's a great deal of flex built into them. That doesn't really give the answer as to why, which was given in the meeting, I would add, in order to provide near limitless discretionary authority to the decision-making body. On page 13, SB 478, which is now signed into law, sets an FAR limit, lower limit of 1.25, not 125, for eight to 10 unit parcels, not eight to 20. On page 14, the list of suggested biases, I would add bias for drivers over pedestrians to housed over the homeless and owners over renters. And on page 18, I would change my position of supported banning parking garages or requiring that instead they be placed underground. I would describe that more accurately as pointed out that parking garages and underground parking are expensive and mandated by the city's requirements in the first place. Those are my notes. Pardon me.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Bookbinder. Any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes with those modifications?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the minutes with those modifications mentioned by Commissioner Bookbinder.
Great, and do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioners Sir. Corin, may we have a voice vote, please?
Your school finder.
Hi.
Mr. Kempfert.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Rivlin.
Aye.
Mr. Zisser.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ching.
Abstain or absent.
And Cheryl Strawski.
Hi. Great, thank you. This is the communications portion of the meeting. Director Eastwood, do we have any communications? For the commission this evening?
Strawski, other commissioners, Robbie Stood, Plan Director, Community Director, I'm sorry. No communications, and I believe for the next item, staff has no requested agenda modifications or postponements.
Thank you. All right, this is the oral requests section, so I'll open this section with the virtual gavel. This is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that isn't on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak?
There's nobody in the waiting room.
All right. That sounds good. Moving on, then I will close with the gavel. So we'll move to the meeting agenda this evening. Before we start, Commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding the item on the agenda tonight? Right, seeing none. So this is the public hearing to consider the application PLN 2021-82 of Margaret Williams on behalf of the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District for a conditional use permit and a parking modification permit to allow establishment of a government office and facility within an existing research and development building and a tree removal permit to allow removal of two trees on property located at 1315 Dell Avenue in the Controlled Manufacturing Zoning District. Planning committee in our planner this evening is Daniel Foma. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me quickly share my screen here. Okay. We do have an application for a conditional use permit with a parking modification permit and a tree removal permit for property located at 1315 Dell Avenue. This is an approximately two acre property located at the southwest corner of Husky and Dell Avenue within the CM Controlled Manufacturing Zoning District. This parcel is part of the larger Versona Technology Park that consists of seven buildings. As you see here on the right with the map and the photograph of the subject building. The application for the condition use permit would allow establishment of what the zoning code terms a government office and facility, which would be the headquarters for the Santa Clara County Fire District. As part of the application, there's also a request for a tree removal permit to allow removal two small palaver de trees to make space for a generator as well as a parking modification permit to allow reduction to the required amount of parking to allow a change from what currently is an R and D building to an office building. Here we have the floor plan showing the configuration of the proposed Fire District Headquarters. It's generally laid out as a professional office with a number of private offices, shared cubicle spaces, and a number of conference rooms and training spaces. This building would just be the administrative headquarters for Fire District. There would be no servicing, maintenance, or dispatching of emergency vehicles from the location consistent with the intent and purpose of the CM Controlled Manufacturing Zoning District. The primary aspect with the application for this evening's discussion is the requested parking modification permit. Because the building was designed to be an R and D use, which has a lesser parking standard than professional office, there is deficiency. The proposed use of the building requires 209 parking stalls at a ratio of one stall per 225 square feet at the professional office ratio. The parcel itself includes 95 onsite stalls plus 67 offsite stalls on the adjacent parcel as part of a shared parking program. Nonetheless, that still results in a deficit of 47 parking stalls. Excuse me. The applicant's basis for the request of reduction is multi-fold. First, they do note that the floor plan conubration accommodates up to 123 employees, which is less than the number of parking stalls that would be afforded to the building, and that would also leave 39 stalls for visitors. There is a condition of approval that would require installation of bicycle parking and preparation of a transportation management program by the Fire District to encourage their staff to use alternative modes of public transportation. And lastly, do note that the condition use permit would very much restrict the use of this building to government use. It could not be converted to a general office facility such as a technology company that could have a greater parking demand due to greater concentration of employees within the building. Therefore, the staff does recommend that the planning commission take the following action: adopt the resolution approving the condition use permit with the parking modification permit and the tree removal permit and finding that the project is categorically exempt under CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Or Daniel?
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Yeah, Daniel, just a couple of thoughts that just came to me is, so our parking requirement for the R and D is one space for every 300.
Correct.
Where feet versus and for office, it's one every 225, but so this is a 47,000 square foot building and it only has 95 onsite spaces. Shouldn't there, in theory, be whatever.
More parking.
Yeah.
It's a good question. So the Versona Technology Park was originally developed as one piece of land, and then it was subsequently subdivided into smaller pieces, and because of that, you do have shared parking parcels subject to reciprocal parking agreements. The applicants did provide a copy of that agreement for this parcel, and that would be further codified through a accreditation of a separate instrument to make it clear that in approving the parking modification permit, the city would expect the continuation of that shared parking definitely.
Okay, so just in general, there's just direct parking spots per building is not the case in this for this project because it was built kind of a piecemeal deal.
Well, it was built as a single office park. And so when it was built, there were no property lines. And so over time, at some point, the city allowed the division of the property, and obviously, the balance of parking was not equal per parcel relative to the building demand. And I would also add that over time, the city has allowed changes in use, particularly the Kaiser buildings that have different parking demands and the original R and D purpose.
Well, I guess I'm only thinking because anybody who's a customer of Kaiser knows in any facility, Campbell, Santa Clara, Oakland, anywhere, parking is always an issue, but not to beat it to death, but if every building in this technology park was occupied to its full extent, would there be enough parking on site to handle all of it? You know that? Don't want to get too complicated on this, but.
Well, I suppose that would maybe be a greater concern if what we were looking at here was a general office use and maybe had twice the occupant capacity of what the Fire District is proposing. But the city has, in fact, granted parking reductions for Kaiser on several occurrences, and those over time do add up. I mean, if that is certainly a legitimate concern whether or not the additive effect of these parking reductions could effectively compromise the carrying capacity of the center as a whole to be able to accommodate all the uses.
Okay, yeah. Thanks, Daniel. And one other area, just real quick, and we mentioned the landscaping plan. So was that landscaping plan approved along with when they developed the original technology park?
No, the city allowed a pretty major remodel of the park, I think about seven years ago.
Okay.
And as part of that, there was a lot of new landscaping, so I think what you see here are just some relatively young trees, and technically, they're protected.
Okay, that was my, that's why I was wondering why such small trees. Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did. So first, what broadly speaking with a TDM plan consisted here, I looked at the site and it's almost the closest transit is almost a mile away to the Winchester Station. I think that's the closest thing there is.
You know, that's an excellent question. We do have Fire District staff here who can speak to that.
Okay, well, we'll postpone that until a little later. I will say I biked down there last week on the Lookoutas Creek Trail, and it's like very easily accessible from the trail. On that note, do we know, I'm hearing, you know, concern about reducing parking. Do we have any idea how heavily used the existing parking is? Like, it's only a point in time thing, but when I went out there, it was the middle of a weekday morning, and the vast majority of the parking, of this giant parking lot was empty. Do we know how heavily utilized it is?
No, that would require preparation of a parking survey, having a consultant actually go out to the property multiple times and count vehicles or some level of trip counts in and out to better understand the parking capacity and usage currently, but no, right now, we do not have that information.
Okay, and are requirements on this front, are they are they equivalent to the IT standards for this kind of building, or are they higher, they lower?
I imagine it's inevitably higher, but I don't know for a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? All right, I just had one question, Daniel. So so the owner of parcel three is granting the applicant who will be occupying parcel one, the right to the 67 parking spaces, and I was interested to understand what is the use of the parcel three property?
Maybe the project architect can speak to that, but I know, I mean, the overall usage, we have the three Kaiser buildings. Now, there's one building that's used heavily by ChargePoint, another is Santa Clara Valley Health, which is administrative office building, but I don't know offhand the balance of the remaining buildings.
This is Margaret, or I go by Maggie also, actually. William.
Just one second, because I think we're gonna, we're gonna open up the floor here after we get through the Commissioner questions. Are there any other questions?
Actually, I have a question, Matt.
Yes, please, Matt.
So do we know if there has been complaints about parking issues out there? Because when I go to Kaiser, you know, at Campbell, I don't always get the best parking spaces, but I do get a parking space, you know. So do we know of any complaints about lack of parking?
Well, not that any complaints that have been logged with the planning. No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for the applicant.
Hi, okay, I'm Margaret Williams with HPS Architect, and we can basically share the plans that we submitted, if you'd like. We don't really have anything else to we don't have a presentation, per se, since it's a fairly straightforward item. And if there's any follow-up questions. Chief Snow, I can also turn it over to you if you'd like to say a few words. Let me just share.
Sure, thank you very much, and thank you for the commissioners for taking time in the meeting and recognizing the Fire Department's application tonight. And special congratulations, Rob Eastwood, on your new position. We worked together in the past on other projects at the county of Santa Clara. Tonight, we're talking about 1315 Dell Avenue, which is a single parcel. So it's very unique because the rest of the park has conjoining parcels that span different properties and different buildings. And so what the planner was speaking about is completely accurate. At one time, there was a shared bucket of parking for everyone. When the county fire purchased the building, it's important to note that parking is a consideration because this will house our Fire Prevention Division. That is essentially one of the single highest uses of public interface to the building because we have different applicants from unincorporated county land, as well as the cities that we serve in our jurisdiction coming forward in an effort to go through a similar process as we're doing tonight. But this is a standalone parcel, and recognizing that within the CCNRs of the purchase of the building, 67 spaces were allotted to us as part of the recorded deed. And so County Fire has ample parking in our Planning and Fire Prevention Division. There's less than five customers per hour that come through. We think we're well positioned for the next 10 years with future growth and expansion for any employees that come into the building. As far as the question about adjacent spaces, that is addressed in the CCNRs as part of the purchase from the owners of the adjacent properties. And I think it's important to note that we are trying to be a good neighbor, moving down the street from our headquarters on Winchester Boulevard, and it's very important to us to retain the character and the flow of traffic through the parking lot. One of the first questions that was asked of us when we were trying to purchase the building, in fact, was, are there fire trucks running through? No, there will not. They will be restricted to the perimeter of the property, and within the parking lot will only be administrative vehicles and personnel. As to the matter of keeping character, we are working with the owners under those CC, the same CCNR covenants to make sure that we maintain the character of the signage. We're coming through the building department on the building permit itself, and it's very important to note that we're not going to build any signs or do anything that takes away from the character and quality of what people experience going to the other businesses within those parcels. So for that matter, on the transportation demand management study, it's an important question to ask because I think we're all in a position, we are a dependent special district, and that means we report to the county board of supervisors acting as the Board of Directors for the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. And believe me when I tell you, the Board of Directors is very concerned with emissions reductions, making sure that we're maximizing use of carpooling, we're looking at alternate transportation means and so forth. It would be unfair to characterize the project in the light of the last mile served by Valley Transportation Authority because that's the same thing as trying to do a project depending on Caltrans running the interstates. But what we can say is that we're trying to address as much as possible, how do we reduce employees coming into the office? How do we encourage carpooling? How do we encourage bicycle transportation? And I think that a transportation demand management study could point to all those variables and all the encouragement that we're giving lockstep with County of Santa Clara's efforts in reducing their overall carbon emissions to the community. So as far as parking as a general, I appreciate the planning commission's consideration moving forward on this item because work can be done to reduce the actual employee's single-use commute transit cars going in there. And at the end of the day, this is strictly administrative office use. We're excited to be within the city of Campbell. We look forward to moving down the road into a city that we serve. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much for that overview. I think that addressed most of the questions. Are there other questions for Chief Snow?
Yes, please, Chair.
Please, Vice Chair Ching.
Yeah, so good evening. I've got a couple of questions. One to help me get a sense of the potential occupancy of the building. What's Santa Clara Fire District's policy on homeworking?
Like, like many different organizations, we've been hit hard by COVID, and it's taught a lot of valuable lessons on how to maximize productivity of your workforce. At the end of the day, the maximum administrative staff that we have at this time is outlined in our letter to the planner, but we don't have a hard and steadfast policy. We would like to employ as much as possible the option for employees to work from home balanced with the impact that we are a fire department. We need to be available to the public. People come in, they have concerns, they need to see a person. They can't stand at the door and call on the phone. So with that, in the administrative office, you're seeing a culmination of fire prevention and mitigation services, investigative services, you're seeing emergency management services addressing COVID both within our department and how we deal direct with patients. We're dealing with support services staff that are planning the future of the 15 distinct fire stations and so forth. I think it's important to note that the staff ebbs and flows. And County Fire is a proponent of flexible work schedules for administrative staff. That means four 10s, nine 80s, or you can work five, five days a week and eight hours a day. And so what that really means is there's some peaks and valleys throughout the week. I can tell you that generally Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is pretty busy. Mondays and Fridays are not. And so overall, there's a finite number of people. We extrapolated based on the district history, based on what could be coming forward with WUII, with any federal cessation of land, with the LAFCO study that's undergoing for South County Fire Protection District, with the Los Altos Hills Fire Protection District. Regardless of all that, there's a stated growth rate that we can anticipate that there is more than enough parking, and I guarantee that when we get there, there will be people from other parcels doing business or working that will probably park in our spots. We're not going to ticket anyone. We're a friendly neighborhood fire department. That's the way it probably will happen, but does that answer your question? Does that?
Thank you. Yeah, that's useful. And if I may, I've got a second question, a different question related to the positioning of the generator. I was looking at, I think it's page 70 in the packet. It looks like the generator is being located in the center of the car park, which I'd probably say doesn't enhance the environment or the landscaping. And there was a note, I believe, in the packet, if it was relocated to another part, it could use three to to another part, it could use three to four parking spaces. If that was the case, and we, we went with that option, would that cause, cause you a problem in relocating the generator elsewhere? Or does it have to be in that particular location?
Well, I appreciate the question, Commissioner, because, you know, clearly, anything that we do, not only within the city of Campbell, but any of our operating cities, whether it comes to trimming trees, adding parking spaces, trying to extend an apparatus bay garage, we look at those environmental footprints carefully. What's happening on this site is that essentially it's surrounded by what I would consider, and I'm sure Rob Eastwood might agree with me, antiquated bioswale technology. I don't like earth against building by any means, but that's, that's where we are. That's where we're operating. And originally, I wanted to place the generator between the sidewalk and our building in that bioswale kind of grassy knoll, non-water conservative area. That doesn't work. The landlord of the adjacent parcels didn't like it, the city didn't like it. So we looked for alternatives and quite frankly, the bioswale area in question, the island of parking, is an underutilized space of zero escape landscaping. So albeit it's aesthetic to have zero escape landscaping, by no means does it benefit the environment in any way. In fact, the little water that it takes would be a negative impact potentially. But of note, those are ADA accessible spaces and we're creating a walkway to bring it up to current code, not only because it's the right thing to do, but it's also a city requirement. But that will nibble into the bio, the bio landscape, the zero escape as it is. And by placing the generator there, I think it's important to note, a lot of people think of the generator as the noisy diesel generator that kicks on. This is a natural gas generator that's intended for emergency use power only. So there may be a monthly test that people probably won't even notice. But at the end of the day, it's not powering the building like a Tesla battery, if you will. It's only intended to be there in case of power outage. And so given that we need to nibble into the landscape for ADA compliance, given that we need to nibble into the landscape because of throughway, I think it makes sense to place a generator there. And HPS, the architect, would attest that we're looking at aesthetically pleasing enclosures. So it's not just something ugly that's in the middle of the parking lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? The applicant?
Just, just to be clear, so you're saying that you, you would prefer to put the generator in the landscaping rather than in the parking spaces?
Now, we kind of went down that road and I think it was really a PG&E right away and easement issue as well. It is problematic to put it on the corner of Hacienda in the opening of the driveway where the microscope's hovering over. That doesn't really work that well. And so we get that because you need to have an enclosure, clearly, for security and safety. And so we're okay putting it in the, in the middle where it's currently located in the plans because even though we need to trench and it causes extra work and extra cost, it's probably the right thing to do because it's the most put away, tucked away, least invasive, less of an eyesore instead of sticking out because the landscape is consistent if you go around the whole, all the adjacent properties of that Dell Avenue complex. So we're, we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. If we don't have any further questions for the applicant, then I will open it up to the planning commission for discussion. Who would like to start?
I, I don't mind chiming in just really quickly because I know I have some questions, but I, I don't think there's, there's not a parking problem now or in the foreseeable future, you know, at some point, who knows, but you know, there've been so many cautious things done in our, in our approval here with the number of workstations and you know, if there's three parking complaints, you can look at it again, et cetera. So I think we're pretty well covered. I was actually, it was interesting that Commissioner Qing had the question about the, the generator moving for aesthetic reasons. I, I was originally thinking if those were nice trees, then I'm happy giving up four parking spaces to keep some nice trees. But those were little small trees, so I didn't go down that way. Anyway, I'm just saying, I, I kind of, I'm on board with the, with the staff recommendation and approval with all the caveats in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Cray. It looks like our city attorney has his hand up.
Yes, I, I just was wondering if I missed it. I didn't notice any questioning of whether there are members of the public who might want to speak on this item.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item before we open it up to the commission?
Still don't have anybody in the waiting room.
Thank you, Corinne. Great, all right, I'll turn it back over to the commission then. Thanks, Bill.
I'll echo Commissioner Cray's comments there. So I'd be supportive. I don't see any issues with the parking. And the, the added color, the chief added type of, goes to that point as well. It would have been nice not to cut down the trees, but it looks like they've evaluated different options and might be the best place for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kamkar?
Thank you, Chairman Mike. Chairman Maggie. I also don't think parking is going to be an issue. I believe that, you know, the way they have planned it, you know, they planned it very carefully and it makes sense. However, in the one percent chance that, you know, our predictions don't pan out and there would be a parking issue. I know one of the things that we do at, you know, at my work is sometimes when the client wants extra parking, there are other ways to create additional parking, you know, for example, you can have employees who come early, you know, put a car on a parking elevator where it would, you know, raise their car up, you know, I don't know, six, seven, six, seven feet off the ground. And another car can park below, under them on the pavement. You know, and then when they're ready to go, the employee that arrived later would, would go first, you know, opening the space so that the first employee can lower his or her car and leave. So there are possible solutions if, you know, in the one percent chance it's needed, you know. So I think the plan they have is a very good plan.
Thanks for laying out that option. Commissioners, is there?
Yes. So I'm, I'm good with this plan and actually I prefer the generators to be in the parking lot than on the street. I think it's a better solution in terms of aesthetics. I don't much like all those boxes out on the street, especially when, when it's a nicely landscaped area. As far as the parking goes, I'm willing to trust the chief for now, based on their numbers. I, I don't think, you know, we're, we're still in the pandemic, so, you know, until we're out of little ways, we're not going to really know because I assume that some of the, the empty spaces have to do with people working virtually. So, but I'm just speculating. So I'm thinking that a little ways down the line will, will have a better idea as to whether there's going to be any, any near term problem in the next few years. So, but I, I support and, and welcome the, the fire department into Campbell. So I'm, I'm good for it. That's all.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I have much to add, but I'm supportive of this project based on some of my counterparts' comments. The parking, while it doesn't meet the initial threshold, I think, I've been to this plaza many times or this complex many times and I haven't seen an impact that would put people on the street. Yes, to Commissioner Kamkar's comment, sometimes you have to circle down an alley or a row of parking to find a spot. But I think it will work out and there are enough checkpoints within the provisions here that if we need to bring it back, we can. I do welcome the fire department to Campbell. Is there, I guess there already are here, but move to this complex. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Yep, and I'll just add my comments, which is that I'm also supportive. It seems like the, the parking modification permit won't be an issue, given the number of staff. And if the, if the number of staff does increase, that just tells us that we're, our city services are also increasing as needed. So with that, sounds like we've got some good consensus. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Before we do, I just wanted to throw in my two cents.
I guess, please.
That's okay. Sure. I, I don't really have anything to add. Just wanted to say I'm supportive of this project. I originally got the sense when I read this through that we would be either trading off parking or trees in favor of parking, but it sounds like the generator situation is a little more complicated than that. And, you know, the applicant sounds like they have that in hand. Also, I'm generally looking forward to getting more reasonable parking standards so that applicants don't have to ask for reductions like this. The idea that we're going to require two hundred and nine parking spaces for a maximum of a hundred and twenty-three workers seems pretty wrong. But yes, I, I support this project and like thank the applicant for considering.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess with that said, I move that the planning commission take action to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit, the parking modification permit, tree removal permit, finding the project categorically sent under section fifty-three or one class one of CEQA.
Great. Do we have a second to Commissioner Rivlin's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Rivlin. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rivlin?
Hi.
Kamkar?
Hi.
Commissioner Cray?
Hi.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Hi.
Commissioner Zisser?
Hi.
Director Qing?
Hi.
Merrill Strosky?
Hi.
Number seven zero.
Great, thank you. That item passes unanimously. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Congratulations. We look forward to, to having you in Campbell. And thanks so much for, for coming to the meeting and just adding a lot of really wonderful color and thoughtfulness to, to your plans and looking forward to continuing working with your organization throughout the county. All righty. So with that, Director Eastwood, do we have anything, do you have anything to report to the commission this evening?
I do. And, and I also congratulate the fire district. Nice to see Chief Snow again. I do have a couple of important updates. I'm sorry to keep you from the game. It is four one, but it's only in the fifth inning, so there's still time to watch. Couple of things. So next, next week on the nineteenth, you have a joint study session with the city council. The intent is to be, have informational, educational briefing with you on the housing element. So you'll remember last month, a very heavy, heavy study session on the general plan, non-housing element related items. We put that chapter aside and we'd like the commission and the council over the next two months to dive in deep on kickstarting our housing element. And I'll be looking at housing opportunity sites, densities of development, where housing goes, eventually housing policies. But to start that, we wanted to give you a nice educational briefing on the rules. There's been a lot of new state laws that come into effect on, on how you pick housing opportunity sites, give you some briefing on the past opportunity sites, and just so you're ready to hit the ground running. So next week, on the nineteenth, you'll have that joint study session. Logistics are still finalizing. I've been told there's a preference because we're still phasing folks in on having, not having commissioners come in. There might be some opportunity for commissioners to come in. And so we're working closely between Corinne and I and the clerk to see if that's an option. But it might be all Zoom for the commission and a few council members. But we're going to make sure, of course, you can see and hear everything and ask questions. But that's the, that's the game behind for next week. With that, you'll see, and you might have seen, we got a big outreach effort going on the housing element. The, the term we're using is Campbell's Plan for Housing. The thought is if we told the community, hey, join the housing element, most folks might not know what an element is and might think it's part of the periodic table. So we tried to use a term maybe people can accessorize. We were putting out probably today, tomorrow, eighteen thousand postcards to the community, all known addresses in Campbell. We put out forty-three hundred emails. We got booths at the farmer's market last weekend. We'll have a booth at Oktoberfest this weekend. So we're trying to contact anybody and every can, try and be as inclusive as possible, having people join this conversation on how we plan for three thousand housing units in Campbell. Very important conversation. So you'll see a lot of outreach. The idea is that outreach will start. A lot of the feedback you'll get will deliver to you what we heard in the meetings. And of course, you're welcome to join through the surveys in November. And so you'll hear what the community said as you start to, to consider the options on where housing goes and at what densities. But if you'd like, take a look at the website. We have a nice survey out. We already have almost up to a hundred people who took the survey. We'll have three public outreach meetings. We invite you all to attend and just observe. But again, we're trying to get that, the word out for folks. Very important decisions, three thousand housing units on, on where and how to put them. Turning to operations, I'm sorry, we missed, I think we missed the planning commission, but I was sad to report. We have, our planning staff has been cut by one. So Assistant Planner Nas Healy, who I think you've all seen a couple of times, she took a position with Los Altos. It was a step up for her as an associate planner. Her last day was a week ago, Friday. So when you see Mr. Fama here, you're looking at half of our planning department. We're down to two senior planners. So we have a slim staff. We're posting for assistant planner. It closes on twenty-second. Any commissioners know some nice, bright, sharp planners? Or if you'd like to be a planner, we have an opening. Looking to add to our staff. In the interim, we're asking all the rest of our folks to chip in a little bit. Korean or economic development folks or building folks, but we're having a little bit of limited servicing until we get someone on board and, and fully up to speed. Last but not least, City Hall has been closed, as you know, for over a year plus due to COVID. As of this Monday, we're starting the soft opening and that's sort of been tailored with starting to bring the commissions and councils back eventually. So as of Monday, if you'd like to come and get in-person services, you can. Appointments are strongly recommended. We have a pretty slick service for planning service. You can go online, book a virtual appointment. You can book an in-person appointment, pick any time you want and come in or talk to one of our planners, one of our two planners. But again, if you'd like to come get service from us in person, you can. We're encouraging people to continue to use our services online. They're very efficient. You can submit building permits online. You can talk to planners online. But again, if you want in-person services, we are starting that soft opening. So that's a lot to deliver, but of course, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I think Commissioner Rivlin had a question.
Was next week's meeting starting at six thirty or was this a normal seven thirty joint meeting?
I had it down. Let me check. I actually had it down at five thirty, Commissioner Rivlin, because the council has a normal meeting starting at seven thirty. And the study session usually starts two hours earlier, so.
Understood. Yeah. And we'll, maybe it's already been sent, but have invites, same Zoom type invite as normal? Maybe that's Corinne?
Yes. Yeah, that's the plan. I, you know, I just heard today there might be an opportunity to, to come into the chambers if you really want. And again, I, I just heard that info up, but, but so, so the default is you'd have a Zoom invite. You can be in the beneath via Zoom if you'd really like to come in. We can work with you on that and I'll follow up with Corinne on our city clerk on, on how that could happen.
Thank you.
Question.
Commissioner, did you have your hand up?
Oh, oh. Yeah, I keep forgetting how to put the virtual hand up. Um, that's okay. Director Eastwood, on the community meetings, these three community meetings, are they? are they all going to be the same and if it's just one that you can get to, or are they going to be different?
Yeah, that's a great question. I I think the answer is both, which is probably confusing. So we want probably 80% of the content will be the same. We were trying to tailor them a bit to different audiences. And the themes we're thinking are, one is if you need housing in Campbell. So those who rent or work in Campbell and and try and get tapped into that group and have them a bit tailored to that meeting. Second one, hey, is your stakeholder, you live in the community. So one, do you need housing in Campbell? Two, do you have housing in Campbell? And then three is what are sort of professionals, advocacy groups, developers, real estate developers who are sort of professionals in the housing business? So so we're probably going to have a second email blast to try and get folks, if they like to to go to the specific meetings, the probably about 60 to, again, 68% of the content will be similar, but we'd like to use a little of the content to tailor to those focus groups. So but again, if you'd like to attend any of them, you'll get most of the content is the same with a little tailoring in the meetings.
Okay, so I I'm on the page and it looks like you have to register for it. And then these are Zoom meetings, right?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay.
Right, Commissioner Bookbinder?
Yes, in light of how intensely dense the last day session was, will it be at all possible for us to get our agenda slash packet early this time?
Yeah.
I realize you just said that you're short on people.
No, no, completely understood. Our target was to actually publish the packet tomorrow. So so good question. Not as early as last time. I I know we got it too much earlier, but you should see the packet out tomorrow.
Okay. Also, I, sorry, wrote this down. I just wanted to confirm, can I attend the outreach sessions?
Yes, you can. Yeah, I mean, the only, with our attorney here, hiccup would be and I'll spill away. If you if we see a quorum of the commission at a meeting for which you'll eventually have to review, that that's an issue. What I might suggest, if you're thinking of attending the meetings, probably let Corinne and I know and we'll just work with you to make sure that doesn't happen. The last thing we want is a quorum of commissioners there and present and potentially discussing issues that of course it would eventually come to you. Look to Bill if he has anything additional to add to that.
No, I think that's a good summary. If if we did have a quorum of commissioners there, since it is a city hosted event, we would have to notice it as a meeting of the planning commission. Otherwise, well, I mean, that's essentially what would have to happen.
I got a question.
I I'm sorry, I just had one more, which was when is is registration open for the the upcoming meetings? Don't the, like, I see a registration link for the first one. Oh, and actually with a series of them from October to December, how do people register for the focus groups?
Yeah, I, things are happening as we speak. I didn't think we had that up yet. So to my knowledge, we might have the first one open, but I know we don't have all three. But once they do, you can register and you will have a Zoom link to attend. So that's the plan to answer the last question. My advice and and the city attorney is correct. We could pivot and notice these as commission meetings. That's a lot. That's a lot of logistics. I think we'd probably like to have them as a community meeting. So I just politely asked the commission, hey, just let us know if you registered to go to one of the meetings and we'll just work to see if if we're not going to have to cross that quorum issue.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I have a question. Sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Adam, were you finished?
Yes, yes, I'm all done. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to be clear. Director, you're you're telling us that we cannot even, we shouldn't even register as a Zoom attended as a Zoom or you talking about attending them in person? That would trigger the quorum issue.
Yeah, really, it's it's it's, but well, it's an interesting question. Technically, it's both. That, you know, it's a meeting and and if a quorum of the commission is at a meeting and you're there on items that would come to you, that, you know, it should be a notice meeting because you're deliberating or could deliberate on items that you would, you know, the public needs to see you as the majority. You know, my editorial comment is Zoom is a little interesting because technically you're separate and you're usually attendees watching. But I think in an abundance of caution, I see the attorney smiling. You know, we still treat the Zoom meetings as we did normal meetings. And we advise unless we notice the meeting, you not have a quorum there. But Bill, if you want to weigh in more on that, go ahead.
If I could just follow up on that, I apologize, the attorney for jumping in, but my understanding is deliberation means when we talk back and forth amongst us. And if it's a Zoom, if you're just watching, it's almost like you're watching television. You know, there's, it's just, I mean, you're taking in information, yes. You're not really having any feedback.
Yeah, I had that same question. I think that's a great question for the city attorney.
And actually, the Brown Act applies to more than just deliberation. It applies to hearing a matter as well. So if a quorum is present at a, and then there's a distinction also between city hosted meetings and like community meetings that's being put on by a member of the community where actually a quorum could attend as long as you do not communicate amongst yourselves about the matter. But in a city hosted meeting, if you've got a quorum present and hearing the matter, then it would have to be noticed still.
So could I at least make one suggestion? I don't know if this is a good suggestion or not, but if if there's enough of us who are interested in in sitting in on on these meetings, maybe you could take, you could send out a request for us to choose dates and that no more than two of us at a time, maybe, or three of us at a time goes to a particular meeting. And and we could register that way.
Yeah, that that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Zissar. So why don't I, after this, maybe I'll work with Corinne to to work with you on a poll or a selection. There's three meetings and there's seven of you, right? So it should be enough for him.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I don't think we, it sounds like what I'm hearing from everybody and I agree, is that we don't want to miss the opportunity to hear all the valuable information that the planners have to share on this topic.
Okay, let's count on that. So with Corinne hopefully on there, we'll reach out to you and pull you on on the dates.
Thank you for making that a combination.
Sure.
And also, and also I'm going.
Also what? I'm sorry, Commissioner Kamkar?
I was just going to say, can we ask the attorney to to think about this issue? Because what if, what if later on, let's say, a couple hours after the meeting, you watch the YouTube video of it? You still heard it, you know, so is that gonna, is that gonna be a Brown Act issue, you know, or you know, or is it when you hear it at the same time that it becomes an issue? Not necessarily, maybe you watch a video later on.
It's 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 when you come together to do it. So yeah, watching a video after the fact would not be a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Alrighty, Commissioner Bookbinder?
Will be recorded. Sorry. So to be clear, these things will be like recorded and and posted on YouTube and live streams and all that?
Yes.
Okay, that makes things much, much.
Right, great. Well, thank you very much, Director Eastwood, for that very thorough report. A lot of exciting things coming up on our agenda and looking forward to that session with the city council next week. So with that, I will close the planning commission meeting for October 12th and look forward to seeing everybody next week. Have a great night.
Bye bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.